All here okay? Great, great. Welcome to our candidates forum for Mayor and City Council, City of Meriden. My name is David Welsh, I'm the City Editor Director General, and I will be your moderator tonight. I agreed to be moderator mostly because I believe that things in fear you can help grow. So that's, I'm gonna test that theory out. But I'm very happy to be here, I hope you are too. Glad that they're joining us tonight, whether it's in person or online, and we'd also like to thank Meriden Public Library for welcoming us and giving many of you at home a glimpse of this newly redesigned facility. This room particularly fits the bill for what we plan to accomplish, to educate, inform, and enlighten our voters as we all learn more about our candidates. We will begin with the mayoral forum. Each candidate will be allowed to make a one-minute opening statement and a one-minute closing statement. Two opposing candidates will receive a range of direct questions from the moderator and a small panel of reporters, in this case, our Meriden beat writers Mary Ellen Goode and Christian Metzger, as well as Tom Welsh of the Midstate Chamber of Commerce. Questions will be provided by the Record Journal and the Midstate Chamber. As moderator, I will ask questions selected in advance from the public. Candidate responses will be subject to time limits enforced by the moderator. The candidate receiving the direct question will have two minutes to respond, followed by a one-minute rebuttal from their opponent. Now for opening statements. We did a coin flip just to get everything rolling in the right direction so this would seem fixed. And candidate Oregon will give the first opening statement. I think Candace Scarpatti will be the second half kickoff, Washington's football, but you know, that's how we're gonna go about things. First question will then go to candidate Scarpatti. Okay, if you would like to give a stroke in the statement, candidate Kirk Horton, our Republican candidate.
That's, that's. Good evening, everyone. First, thank you to the Record Journal, Meriden Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Scarpatti, and all of you for joining us tonight. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Kirk Horton. I'm a lifelong American resident, a husband and father of three. In fact, my family has lived in our amazing city of Meriden for over 145 years. My father was a proud member of the Meriden Police Department for 27 years. He instilled in me the importance of community service and encouraged me to use my voice to help engage and unite those who feel they are not being heard. Together, we can foster a culture of civic engagement and collectively work toward creating a brighter future for our city. Tonight, I look forward to discussing many topics that are vital to Meriden, such as public safety, spending, education, tax reform, economic growth, government accountability, and transparency. Thank you.
That's candidate Oregon. And now Democrat Kevin Scarpatti.
Just to be clear, unaffiliated is my party affiliation, but nonetheless, thank you all very much for being here tonight. Thank you to Record Journal, thank you to the Midstate Chamber of Commerce, thank you to candidate Oregon as well, for everyone turning out to the debate tonight. As someone who's been born and raised in this community, it's truly been an honor to have served, not only as your mayor, but also as a Board of Education member, and then a city councillor, and the last eight years as your mayor, to really see the transformation that I've helped lead over the years. However, it's clear the work isn't finished. And so what's different about me, as I stated, and you won't hear about any other candidate, is that I'm unaffiliated. I don't belong to a political party because I put you first, I put Meriden first in every decision that I make, and I'm someone who's very active, someone who's involved, and someone who's invested in our community. I work with a lot of different boards, committees, nonprofits across our community, and I look forward to your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Scarpatti. Our first question will come from Tom Welsh, and it will be from unaffiliated candidate Kevin Scarpatti.
Yes, well, before we begin, I just want to make one statement to all the candidates. We do this just once. So first of all, I want to thank all the candidates that are here and the current office holders that are here today. I was of Auburn in my hometown many years ago, and I am very aware of the extreme amount of work that's necessary and commitment that's necessary in order to run for office and then is successful to serve. The Midstate Chamber of Commerce is your local Chamber of Commerce for local businesses, and we're pleased to work with any and all local state officials who are willing to work together with us for the benefit of the communities, business, and taxpayers of Meriden. The first question from the Chamber of Commerce to each of the candidates is, as mayor, what do you see as your role in increasing and supporting the city businesses and city economic and business development initiatives? And what is the number-one economic development priority goal or project that you believe must be accomplished during your term?
Thank you. So over the last several years, we've had tremendous partnership with the Midstate Chamber of Commerce. The job as mayor, as most of you may know, is somewhat ceremonial in nature. So my job is to go out there and make sure I'm being an advocate, not only for all of Meriden and for our residents, but also for our business community. And so I have a close working relationship with both Tom and Roseanne at the Chamber of Commerce, attending a lot of their events and making sure the businesses know that Meriden is open. Meriden is open for new business as well as business expansion of those that currently call Meriden home. Over the last couple of years, we've seen business growth from on the west side specifically. We heard that the closure of Stop &amp; Shop was a major impact, and we reached out and we made sure we locked down another grocery chain, and all these opened over the last two years. The east side has seen tremendous growth along East Main Street corridor due to our tax incentives to try and help bring business into town. Most recently, a strong initiative that I felt was important is to make sure that we were not only showing that we're open for business by having an open-door policy and communicating with our businesses, but investing in those businesses as well. So through the COVID era, we received, every municipality received American Rescue Plan funds. It was a huge priority of mine to make sure that myself, along with Director Fest and City Council, allocated a significant amount of money towards economic development. So we launched the Meriden Business Investment in Growth Program, Meriden BIG, which is investing in businesses that currently call Meriden home and helping bring new businesses into Meriden as well. We received just under 100 applications in that first round of funding. We've got 26 that are currently in the pipeline that are going through the diligence process right now. And so it's my, making sure it's my job to move those projects forward, to bring businesses in, to fill up the vacant storefronts that bother all of us throughout our downtown and across our city so that we can make Meriden a more vibrant place for business.
Your rebuttal, candidate Oregon?
We've been hearing this song and dance for years now, from you and your fellow Democrats. Democrats have spent millions of taxpayer dollars, and what we have to show for it, nothing but empty storefronts and blighted properties lining the streets. So let's be honest with the voters. The Democrat policies have proven not to be working, period. Exclamation point. But luckily for everyone, Republicans have a plan. We have, objectives are to increase growth throughout the city by implementing fiscally responsible initiatives that encourage businesses and entrepreneurs to make Meriden their home. We have three steps to achieve this: rental assistance, build-out assistance, marketing, and promoting. Rental assistance for now will be for small business opening up in downtown. Build-out assistance would help look to expand a big program, and then we have a Yellow Pages program.
That's our candidate Oregon, thank you. We had our time, so it's gonna take a little bit to get into groove, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you.
Next question is for candidate Oregon from Mary Ellen Goode.
Okay, hi Kirk. The mayor's duties include recommending appointments to the city's many board and commissions. The subject of vacancies and inactivity among some of these boards has recently come up. I know for a fact that the Meriden Housing Authority has a six-month vacancy with no appointment. How would you address these other vacancies?
Thank you for that question. Vacancies on boards, well, as I understand right now, most of the boards are filled, and the vacancies that are available, we hope to accomplish working with Democrat and Republican Parties chairs to fill these vacancies along with the mayor. And finding the right people to fill these spots is not easy. Not a lot of people want to volunteer their time to do this. I myself was on the ethics board, and I enjoyed it, and I hope that we get more volunteers to come and help the city, to help change things. There's room for improvement in all these areas, and I hope that it comes to fruition. Thank you.
Your rebuttal, candidate Scarpatti?
Thank you. So as far as the Meriden Housing Authority Board is concerned, that is not a board that's appointed by the mayor. That is something that is done solely by the city manager. So that is one board that the mayor's position does not have authority to appoint membership over. However, I do have a very good working relationship with Millie Torres Ferguson on the Democratic Town Council as chairwoman, as well as Chairwoman Elaine Carriati. We have open dialogue about new members, about openings, and those are referred to the city council. The mayor's job is just simply to recommend. It's the city council that ultimately does the vetting and appointing of those members. And so the names may come from me and then pass through the city council. There have been a lot of new boards added recently, and I want to thank those members who've gotten involved. We have a form that we put up on the city website to make it easier for people to apply. You can go online, up on the city website, howdoIvolunteer? There's a board and commission interest form that pops up. Those emails come to myself and Rob Kuzinski in my office. We vet those, we want to make sure they're qualified, we want to make sure they're willing to attend, and then we, of course, follow up to make sure with staff members or chair people that if they're not attending, we get them replaced.
Very well, thank you. The next question comes from Christian Metzger for candidate Scarpatti.
Yes, you briefly mentioned this in your opening statement, but what is your assessment of the city's process for allocating funds on the American Rescue Plan Act and your current use for the funds that remain?
Yeah, thank you. So the American Rescue Plan, for those of you who don't know, we received $37 million from the federal government in American Rescue Plan funds. Pretty much off the top, we took six and a half million and allocated that specifically toward new and existing business. That's the Meriden BIG program that I referred to earlier. As far as the American Rescue Plan goes, I sit on that committee as mayor. I sit with, there's a group of, there's some city councillors that sit on the committee, as well as residents, Board of Education members, so that we're, you know, making up a pretty good cross-set of our community and looking at and vetting countless applications. To date, we've actually awarded almost 50 of those grant applications, and those are for nonprofits who struggled through COVID, businesses who struggled through COVID, different organizations that want to expand, grow, and invest in Meriden. So we also, at the onset, we were able to say, you know what? Who suffered the most? Obviously, our business community is in need, but so are our kids. Our kids suffer, whether it was not being in a classroom with their peers. So what we did was, we set up free summer camp for every kid in Meriden, regardless of where they lived or income guidelines. We said, if you want a free summer camp experience, City of Meriden's gonna pay you to go to one of the camps that you're choosing. And so we gave out over 1,000 vouchers for those first two summers, and kids got a summer camp experience, I know for a fact, that would never have had that opportunity. So we sought pay dividends right off of that. To date, we're seeing investments, there's staffing going up outside of buildings. Is the process moving along as quickly as they would like? No. As we would like? No. But unfortunately, you're dealing with the federal government. There is a lot of red tape, there's a lot of due diligence that has to go into it, as people who might have applied have seen. We have consultants working directly with each one of those applicants, and I myself have gotten involved if they felt as though an email was missed or communication was lacking to make sure that we are moving these projects forward.
Thank you, candidate Scarpatti. And a rebuttal for candidate Oregon?
Yes, these programs are very important to all of us. The summer camps that the city offers, my grandchildren actually attended, and we'd like to continue all of these. The problem is, the City of Meriden seems to always rely on federal money for all our programs. Out-of-control spending causes us to rely on grants from federal government, the state government, and we're going through our money faster than we can control. I would like to see more accountability in city government so that we can fend for ourselves and take care of our own.
Thank you, candidate Oregon. The next question is from Tom Welsh, and it will be for candidate Oregon.
Yes, one of the issues with middle and upper-income families moving to Meriden and the associated economic development is the perception that Meriden's public school system is inadequate. The City of Meriden approved an increase of $1 million in the Board of Education budget in this year, 2023, after years of flat funding, but not the $2.3 million the Board of Education said that they needed. With a slight decrease in state funding that's expected in FYE 2024, with, then it rises again in 2025, do you support increased local spending on education?
Thank you for that question. Education is an important and complex topic. The city has provided additional funds to the Board of Ed over the last couple of years, plus our state and federal partners have also increased their contributions yearly. We all wish we could do more, but we must face the honest facts here. Meriden is not in a good financial position to be able to allocate the millions more in funding our Board of Ed requests. The real question is, why can't we? Unfortunately for my opponent, it's because of his Democrat running mate's failed policies. When we don't grow our economy, we don't grow our tax base, and this limits us from being able to provide additional funding above absolute requirements. Plus, once the city allocates any funds to the Board of Ed, they cannot be, by state law, removed. The key to providing additional funds to any sector of the city government is to instill an administration with a plan being new business and homeowners to Meriden and to increase the tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Oregon. A rebuttal, candidate Scarpatti?
Thank you. So the Meriden Board of Education does a tremendous job, not only educating our students, but seeking other grant opportunities, private grants, not just federal or state grants. So Meriden has seen great success in seeking those funds, and that has certainly helped bridge the gap for what they haven't gotten in local funding. Let's not kid ourselves, out of 166 school districts in Meriden, we, or in the state of Connecticut, Meriden ranks 165 out of 166. We need to do more. We need to do better. And that is per pupil, local funding direct to the Board of Education excluding those grants. So yes, we need to do more. However, this year, I'm pleased to say, despite that lack of investment, Meriden has seen the greatest district test scores that they have had on record. I'd also like to commend our teachers, some of which are here, our administrators, make sure the better kids in the classroom and outdoors are providing them a tremendous education. We just finished and concluded a survey that states people feel education is the greatest asset in our community. Thank you.
The next question from Mary Ellen Goode for candidate Scarpatti?
Hi Kevin. Do you support the Cook Avenue location for the new senior center over the Westfield Road? Is the project a worthy investment overall?
Yes, and yes. So the senior center is a project that I talked about, actually, at this debate two years ago. It's something that I wanted to make sure we got done for our seniors. Over a year ago, last fall, I proposed to the city council a resolution that would form a study committee. A study committee that would take on the task of looking at a new senior center, where that new senior center should go, whether we renovate the existing one, select a new site. So they met for over a year. The conclusion of that was that a new senior center is needed. A new senior center is needed off the current location, which any of you have been to our current senior center know that it is not a senior-friendly building, and we recognize that. And so from a public safety standpoint, from an activity and recreational standpoint, a new senior center is going to deliver a better quality of life for the seniors in our community. Those who currently use a senior center, but maybe just as important, those who do not currently use a senior center. We want to encourage our residents to get involved. And so it's going to be undoubtedly a worthwhile expense. There was a resolution that I sent to the city council last month that requested they form and pass the resolution for a senior center and Health Department Building Committee that passed, I'm happy to say, this past Monday at city council. It will now be on my desk to, as was mentioned earlier, appoint people to that committee. So if you're interested in getting involved on a building committee, let me know. We're excited for the future of this project. 116 Cook Avenue, cleaning up that blighted, underutilized parcel that is currently housing a building that partially burned down. However, I'm pleased to say we have $2 million from the state of Connecticut in a grant to tear that building down, to open up that space. And if you've not seen the renderings, I can tell you right now, it's going to be beautiful, just like the building we're in, the Meriden Public Library, state-of-the-art building, still the senior center, and Health Department when we're done with that.
Candidate candidate Scarpatti in rebuttal, candidate Oregon?
Our seniors have made huge contributions in making Meriden what it is today. They deserve a facility fitting to those contributions. Republicans have been pushing and campaigning for the last six years, in which, by the way, the Democrats have continuously rejected our efforts at every turn. A new senior center and a health center is very important for providing our most worthy citizens a safe and comfortable and enjoyable place to spend their time.
Thank you, candidate Oregon. Next question from Christian Metzger is for candidate Oregon.
Yes, whether the new senior center ends up at Cook Avenue or Westfield, it will leave a 30,000-square-foot building vacant on Main Street. And so what do you believe should happen to the current senior center building once the new senior center is built?
Thank you for that question. The Kirk Senior Center is a very difficult building to deal with at this point. Taking that building down and coming up with a viable space for restaurants, theaters, parking, the building itself is very old, and downtown needs more restaurants, more entertainment, more things for this community to enjoy. If we make Meriden downtown safer, people will come. If we provide the right atmosphere, people will come. I don't believe that leaving the building as it is right now, renovating it, would do Meriden any good. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Oregon. A rebuttal, candidate Scarpatti?
Thank you. So I've actually, prior to proposing a new senior center and realizing we would be left with an empty building downtown, is if we don't have enough of them, there has to be some foresight that goes into that. So conversations have been ongoing and happened even before the resolutions were drafted by myself and sent to the city council. So we've had discussions, most recently with the Meriden Board of Education. I've actually received a letter of intent that they would like to occupy that space for a future career center for our students. Our students who receive a fantastic opportunity in the Meriden Public Schools right now aren't always going to seek a two- or four-year college, but might want a place where they could pick up trade or get ready for the workforce. So a career readiness center is something that we're currently actively exploring, so we're not left with another vacant building downtown, and one that, oh, by the way, is not on the tax rolls today, so isn't going to be a loss in revenue for the city.
Next question for Mary Ellen Goode is for candidate Scarpatti?
Hi Kevin. You know, it's just transferred over to covering police in Meriden, and I can't believe how busy I've been, especially with the juvenile crime. What are the factors contributing to a rise in auto crimes and other activity involving juveniles, and what can the mayors and city council do about it?
Thank you. So let's not pretend that Meriden is perfect, right? I know a lot of people throw that at me when I talk about how great Meriden is. It's a wonderful place to live. However, we do have an increase in some areas of crime, most specifically, as Mary Ellen noted, motor vehicle thefts. Motor vehicle thefts are up this year. We had our last quarterly public safety meeting last week, and the chief reported that we will likely be closing in on 300 motor vehicle thefts this year alone, which is up significantly from prior years. Last year, we closed at 200, just over 200 motor vehicle thefts. And so we are seeing increases. Why are we seeing those increases, and what can we do about it? So we know there's a lot of juveniles involved. We know there's a lot of juveniles that, when we arrest them, are really held harmless and are released back, a lot of times, to their parents. So most notably, over the last four years, of the over 100 arrests that Meriden Police Department has made, roughly half of those have been adults, and just over more than half have been juveniles. And I just want to, I jotted this down in the last public safety meeting because I thought, not only did I need to hear it, the council needed to hear it, the state needs to hear it, but you need to hear it. So overall crime, year-to-date, from January through last month, we've been almost 1,800 arrests, Meriden Police Department, 1,800 arrests. That's over 1,200 people arrested, 1,222 people arrested. Of those, 253 people were arrested a total of 789 times, which means that those 253 people were arrested over three times each. These are repeat offenders. These are people we are arresting and arresting and arresting, and they are held harmless. There is not enough happening in the courts, in the judicial system, or at the state to make that change. I've been working with their state delegation. They had a crime bill that passed this past year. It's clear it's not enough. North Branford just passed tonight a letter sent to their delegation and the governor.
Time's up, candidate Scarpatti. Thank you. Candidate Oregon in rebuttal.
As I said in my opening statement, my father was a proud member of the Meriden Police Department for 27 years. I understand how difficult it is for our officers to perform their duties as honorably as they do, especially while being demoralized, demonized, and insulted by our city leaders. I can tell you the number-one priority of any form of city government is to ensure the safety and security of its citizens and their property. This happens when leaders of the community support and collaborate effectively with its police department. Community involvement is the keystone to a thriving community. Public hearings should be held by annually and quarterly with all department heads to discuss citizens' issues regarding issues in our city. Making Meriden government more accountable and transparent should be a vital component to whoever holds this office. As I said before, community involvement is crucial to a thriving community.
Thank you, candidate Oregon. The next question is from Tom Welsh for candidate Oregon.
Yes, there's a proposal currently pending to suspend housing development in Meriden due to a Board of Education comments on negative impacts on the school system, which assertion, by the way, was not supported by the September 19, 2023 Enrollment Project Report from the Board of Education Consultant. Would you support a moratorium or restriction on housing development in Meriden, and if so, why?
Thank you for that question. An unbalanced combination of affordable housing units versus market rate of single-family dwelling presents significant challenges to our city's resources, such as overcrowding of schools, public work requests, and added calls for service to the police and fire departments. Meriden has fulfilled its fair share of affordable housing and must look to increase the market rate at single-family dwellings. By doing this, Meriden will increase its attractiveness to business and will bring in disposable income that can be spent shopping at Meriden local businesses. The downtown revitalization Meriden Democrats attempted by flooding the area with affordable housing has been a complete disaster, just as Republicans had tried to warn against. Businesses cannot survive when residents that surround the area can't afford to support the businesses. Add that to the high taxes that come along with affordable housing percentages, it places an overwhelming financial burden on city taxpayers.
Thank you, candidate Oregon. Candidate Scarpatti in rebuttal.
Thank you. So the housing moratorium that was proposed was only for the duration of that study, so it was only going to be for several months anyway. So since the study's already been issued, it's kind of a moot point since we're beyond it. However, at the time, yes, I did support the housing moratorium in an effort to gain that data. Oddly enough, so affordable housing, I've talked about it over and over again, I've said, Meriden has done its fair share. So just to put that into perspective, the state- of Connecticut has asked municipalities to be at a threshold of 10% of your market be affordable housing. As of right now, Hampton is at 9.3%, East Haven, 7.8%, North Haven, 5.8%, right next door in Wallenford, 4.3%, and Woodbridge is 1.18%. Meriden, 16.62%. We need to diversify our housing stock. We need to promote homeownership. We need to look at something other than large-scale apartment dwellings that are going up across our community, because I agree, we need to contribute to a better Meriden.
The next question is from Christian Metzger for candidate Scarpatty.
Yes, the city's last revaluation resulted in a high number of tax appeals. What is your view of the city's most recent approach to revaluation?
So, revaluation was done, we have a process for reval, which has to happen and has to occur every five years. So, reval isn't something that we raise our hand and ask to do at the time when we realize the market is at its peak, because we want all of you to have seemingly high tax bills. However, conversely, when your property value goes up, it allows myself, the city council, to reevaluate our budget, where it allows us to drop the mill rate from where we were at, 40.86 mils, down to 32.99 mils. So, we dropped the mill rate accordingly. Nonetheless, we did have a high number of appeals. I know that the way in which it was dealt with, from first hiring an outside firm to come in and do the assessment, we used drone footage, we flew drones across our city to measure and map out property lines and homes to get square footage. We did physical inspections of homes, and if people weren't obviously either home or allowed in, they did estimates according to the type of home or what the neighborhood was compiled of. At that point, you then received a letter that let you know, hey, here's what your house consists of, here's how many rooms. If that's wrong, please let us know. If that's the case, we then issue you a tax bill if it's right. If you don't agree with it, you go before the Board of Assessment and Appeals. Board of Assessment and Appeals then has the opportunity to vet those applications and determine whether or not you're justified in your reason for coming before and appealing your property value. I don't agree with what we did this year in, it's not so much revaluation, but I know for a fact that, oh, I've gotten more complaints than I ever have from people that never called my office, people who didn't know why their property was suddenly different than everybody else in their neighborhood. I took it upon myself to work with the city manager and the city council, to physically go up to people's homes and do the inspection myself. I did that on multiple occasions to make sure that I saw with my own eyes that there were errors in that department. We recognized there were errors in that department, and we made changes accordingly. And so, yes, there were errors, yes, we're fixing those errors, but overall, I think it was done in a fair process.
Thank you. Rebuttal from candidate Oregon.
We witnessed the perfect storm during our last reevaluation process. Between inflated home prices, tax assessor manipulation of revaluation categories, and a total lack of oversight by our city leaders, this is where we are. City leaders have known about all the problems going on in the tax assessor's office for years, and decided to do absolutely nothing to address it. Multiple state and ethical rules were broken during the process and were brought to cities' leadership's attention. Every city leader is just as guilty and culpable as a tax assessor, and how convenient is it that she was fired just a couple of weeks before the election?
The next question from Christian Metzger is for candidate Oregon.
Yes, does Meriden get a bad rap in comparison to the rest of the state? To what degree are the city's challenges a matter of perception, and what, if anything, should the city government do about it?
Thank you for that question. And yes, Meriden does get a bad rap. Meriden gets a bad rap because of the poor leadership that we've had in this city for over 35 years. We've let the city fade away with blight, with empty storefronts, concentrating on transit districts that nobody gets off the trains. We've raised taxes, we've driven people out of this town, we haven't backed our police, we're making all the mistakes, and we're not fixing the problems. 35 years of the same leadership, 35 years of the same nonsense. We need change in the city. We need to address the problems. We need to fix government from the inside out. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Oregon. Candidate Scarpatty and rebuttal.
First, to just clarify, 35 years of leadership doesn't include me, as I'm only 34 years old, so that's nearly impossible. But, nonetheless, Meriden does get a bad rap, I agree. Meriden does get a bad rap, but it's my job to get out there and put Meriden in the best light possible across the state of Connecticut, working with our city council, working with our department heads, making sure our residents know that they have a voice, investing in city properties such as the Meriden Public Library, that many of you probably hadn't walked into until tonight and realized, wow, things are improving. If you haven't had the chance to sit down on a Friday night at a concert on the Green and enjoy the music and activities, or a Saturday morning at a farmer's market that's packed, there's a lot happening in our city, and I think we need to do a better job promoting it. A lot of times, we are our own worst enemies, and we don't want to admit it. Our school systems are phenomenal. They're attracting families to this district because of the great work that's happening in those buildings. We're investing in our community. We've got a women coming next week for two brand-new ballfields we're going to be opening that our kids for generations are going to play on.
Next question comes from Mary Ellen Godin for candidate Scarpatty.
Yeah, just to continue on that theme, Kevin, about the downtown area, what is your view of the city's investment in the transit-oriented development?
So, transit-oriented development is something that's talked about in community news across the state of Connecticut. It's, in many ways, still a new initiative for mayors and city leaders across the state. However, it's something Meriden believed in and invested in 10, 15 years ago. And if you've driven through downtown recently, you'll know that those benefits have paid off. Has it filled every storefront downtown? No. But let's remember the Millers Complex that was there, of high-rise public housing that sat on what is now going to be an expansion of the Meriden Green. The Meriden Green wasn't there before I took office in 2016. It was a parking lot that once housed a flooded mall. So, all of this, by the way, is flood control to help bring properties out of what ultimately was that 100-year floodplain, and drove businesses out so many years ago. And so, the TOD, while we, when we wrote those specs and we wrote specific zones for it, I think now is the time, we need to sit back and look at what we have, take credit where credit is due. We've got brand-new infrastructure and housing, providing our residents a better quality of life to live in that area, a brand-new train station that I think we could be proud of when people pass through Meriden. We really have done a lot of work downtown, but it's clear we need more. So, what's next around the TOD? So, right now, TOD has some requirements and zoning regulations that mandate any developer coming in put a certain percentage of affordable units if they choose to build housing, or they're incentivized by adding more affordable units into that complex. To me, that, as I mentioned earlier, when it comes to affordable housing, isn't the future of Meriden. We can't sustain on a community that doesn't have and doesn't breed a population with market-rate housing to feed those businesses and have that disposable income. And so, while the TOD has served us, the great purpose is being repeated across the state, we're looked at as a model in many ways, it's time for us to revisit those zoning rights and make some tweaks.
Candidate Oregon and rebuttal.
Yes, I agree. The downtown needs so much attention, it's shown so much work. It should be a priority. The TOD, the zones that we have set up in this town that require our attention are different by nature as far as where they are. Downtown, we recently concentrated on the transit, the train station delivering people downtown and helping to bring it back. And years ago, we spent $24 million or $27 million on a police court complex that was a complete disaster. We need to look at this and look at the models around us and figure out the correct path going forward. Right now, we're spending money, and we don't know the correct direction to go in.
Thank you, candidate. The next two questions are just for individual candidates. This one is for candidate Scarpatty from Reader Karen Scaleup. You were run for office as a non-affiliated candidate. Why have you chosen to caucus with the Democrats? Why not caucus with both parties, Democrat and Republican, since you claim to be unaffiliated? By caucusing with the Democrats, you give the perception of being a Democrat.
So, for those of you who don't know what a caucus is, it happens more so on the city council than it does on the Board of Education, predominantly with those elected leaders. Each party gets together with their own party or groups of parties when it comes to the minority caucus. It's comprised of the We the People Party, as well as the Republican Party, and you've got the majority caucus, which is the Democrats. I don't caucus with either party. I don't. So, I spend an hour or so before each city council meeting when those city councillors are caucusing with one another, going over the agenda, discussing upcoming items that might be controversial, how votes are going to go on the floor. I'm in my office many times talking to residents or staff members and getting things done for the city of Meriden. I'm not caucusing with either party. As I mentioned earlier, I'm unaffiliated, and I'm endorsed by the Democratic Party, so let's make that clear. The Democrats have stepped up and supported my candidacy for this office every year I've run, and I'm grateful for them and their support. But, you know, ultimately, when it comes to decision-making of the city council, if you've watched meetings, you've seen that I side with Republicans at times and Democrats. So, I'm not looking at anything as a political decision. I'm looking at things as a Meriden answer, and what's best for our future. My fiancee and I are getting married two weeks from tomorrow, by the way. Bought a house in Meriden. We'll choose to live our life in Meriden, because we want to live by the future in Meriden. The decision is going to impact me decades from now as to what is happening in the council chambers. And so, it's not a Democrat or Republican discussion that needs to be had. It's about what's best for the future of Meriden. That's the way I've made every one of my decisions over the last eight years as mayor, and even before that, which caused controversy as a city councillor and a Meriden Board of Education member. And I'll continue to do that for the next two.
This question is for candidate Oregon. As a newcomer to city politics without a proven political track record, why should voters support you for the top-elected position in the city? If control of the city council remains the same, and you are elected mayor, are there areas where you would work with the Democratic majority to get things done?
Thank you for the question. Yes, of course, I would work with the Democrats to get things done, but only if it was on our terms. Appreciate your thoughts. Can you repeat the question , please, Mr. Oregon? The second part got me.
If control of the city council remains the same, and you are elected mayor, are there areas where you would work with the Democratic majority to get things done?
So, I guess I already answered the question. So, the wish is that the Republicans take over the city council, and we could actually get change in the city. They have not chosen to work with the Republicans in the past, but we can certainly go forward, hopefully figure things out in the future, and do what's right for the city.
Thank you. Because time's creeping up on us, we're going to move to the last question, and this is for candidate Oregon. Is local government doing enough to promote access and services for residents who primarily speak Spanish?
Absolutely not. We can always do more for every group, not only Spanish, but there's many, many more. This is a melting pot. And if you walk down the streets, you're going to hear people talking different languages, and different religions, different languages all over the city. And we need to do more. I wish I spoke Spanish. It's one thing that I always regreted not taking in high school. We should do more for all people, not just Spanish, but absolutely Spanish-speaking as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebuttal, candidate Scarpatty.
Thank you. I agree with candidate Oregon, that we could always do more, and it's never enough. And so, I think when it comes to, really, over the last several years, we've taken a hard look at, not only from a language perspective, but an ethical perspective, a race and a gender perspective, how to really diversify our staff, and to make it a more welcoming environment for those who may not have English as their first language. I know the Meriden Board of Education has made great strides. They've increased their teacher hiring by, I think this past year alone was really close to 27% of new hires were those of a minority background. And we want to do the same thing in city government, making our staff more like our community. We're a very diverse community and one that we're, I think, proud of. So, if you look at the police department, for example, we've done a tremendous job of attracting and recruiting diverse candidates, candidates that have the ability to have discussions when you pull somebody over in what is already a nerve-wracking circumstance, to then be able to speak their language and maybe issue them some sense of comfort. At that last public safety meeting that I mentioned earlier, it was asked by Tiffany Mayer, if we are tracking those that we are interacting with or encountering that don't speak English or very little English, and the chief admitted that we do not. We don't track that, but that is a metric he is looking into right now, to see if that is, A, something we should be really tracking, and then, once we get that data, how we deal with it. Instead of trying to pull officers of different jobs to try and translate, making sure anytime we send communications out to the public, that we're doing so in both English and Spanish. We have a communications specialist that was brought on board last year, and Tony Turzy's done a phenomenal job of making sure we are reaching out to sections of the public that maybe aren't always listening or hearing us, and understanding what our message is. Working with our churches and faith-based groups, based groups, to make sure we're getting and reaching their population.
Canada, thank you very much. You are going to add in one final question, because it's relevant in recent happenings, and I'm going to give this to candidate Oregon to open. Do you support policies aimed at holding police more accountable through measures statewide, such as an independent review of deadly force incidents, or locally, such as the creation of a civilian board to review IA investigations involving use of force?
You know, in my open remarks, I commented that my father's been a police officer for 27 years. Very important that we respect and defend law enforcement, and not second-guess them. And that's been a problem going on for a while, that we want to take a civilian and put him on a board and have him or her decide whether an action by a trained police officer was done correctly. In many jobs, including my own, when somebody is trained, and they give, they have 40 hours of training, both classroom and out in the field, their first day that they're out there, they have no idea what's going on. But yet, we're taking people off the streets, putting them in a classroom, giving them a ride in a police cruiser, and now they're experts in law enforcement. No, I support the police. I back the police. I trust the police. Are there bad souls in the police department? There's bad souls in every department. They wear cameras. We know what's going on. We need to trust them. We have the measures in place already with internal affairs, with public safety, with the state police. These are the things that we use to judge them and to figure out what's right and what's wrong. We don't need any more.
Thank you, candidate Oregon.
The civilian police review board was passed by the city council. Is it actually two minutes, or is it only one minute? That's why I was cut off last time, I was confused. So, the civilian police review board was passed by the city council last year, a year ago. I vetoed that, because I didn't support the creation of that civilian police review board. It's not something I supported then. It's not something I support now, because of, as I mentioned earlier, the great work that our police department is doing. I recognize that there needs to be accountability, and we have that through various different systems. In meeting with our chief and his command staff, they were willing to compromise and say, if you want a third party outside of just the chief's office and the IA investigations over these use-of-force matters, well, let's use what the system over these use-of-force matters, well, let's use a system and a mechanism that's already in place, which is that public safety committee of the city council that I mentioned. These are made up of representatives of the city council that you all elect. There would be a training involved, just like we have for civilian police review board members. They also had to go through 40 hours of training. I made sure I met with every single one of those members before I just appointed them to make sure that they were going to be fair and unbiased as they reviewed these cases, which to date they've not had to yet.
Very well. This completes the mayoral portion of our forum. We're going to take a very short break to keep things moving along. Will we do closes?
Pardon me?
Closing?
I apologize. You're right. You're guests.
Let's have, because you're open, candidate Skarpadi can give us closing statements. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, thank you all for coming tonight, and just want to make sure we remind everybody that November 7th is not that far away. We want to get people out to vote. I just want to respond to something that was stated earlier about how failed policies are leading to, I don't remember the number of incidents that my colleague had stated or blamed, but most notably economic development. And I want to just point out some of the stuff that is happening. So yes, we've got those business investment opportunities, those grants that are coming down the pipeline. There are real applications in place to bring in restaurants, to bring in breweries, to bring in all the things we hear about. But those are still in the pipeline. So what is actually happening? So we've got three new manufacturing companies that are going to be relocating and opening in Meriden over 200,000 square feet of manufacturing space, bringing in high-quality jobs to our residents up on Maroc Avenue. We've got a golf simulator and sports bar that's taking advantage of these grant dollars that are going to be, that's going to be opening next spring down in South Meriden.
We've got, candidate Skarpadi, we have to move on.
Thank you. The timer, the timer's...
We're supposed to have one minute to close.
All right. Then thank you all very much for coming out tonight.
He had a minute and 10. Could I get a minute? Maybe 11. It has been that last 35 years, one-party Democratic rule is not capable of addressing the issues facing our community. Over the years, numerous actions by our elected officials have hindered Meriden's ability for growth. Their lack of basic economics coupled with their addiction to state and federal money has only shown what not to do when trying to revitalize a district. They have wasted millions of taxpayers' money with nothing to show for other than increased crime and blight. It's unfortunate that the elected far-left Democrats that my opponent supports and fundraises with seems to be only focused on trying to divide and distract the voters from their irresponsible policies. We find ourselves at a crossroads, and it's imperative that we elect leaders who are committed to addressing Meriden's issues and who can implement strategies that benefit all citizens. That's why I'm asking for your vote for mayor and for all Republican candidates this November. Thank you.
This completes the mayoral portion of our forum. I'm pretty sure, thank you for coming, for listening. We have a very brief break. We're going to switch over to the city council. Very brief. Bye. Okay, ready to move on? Ready for the second portion of our forum involving city council candidates. Very briefly go over the rules. Candidates for city council will be seated at two tables by party. The Republican Party directly next to me, the Democratic Party further away from me. Each table will receive a range of direct questions from the moderator and a small panel. Questions will be provided by the Record Journal and the Midstate Chamber. The moderator will also ask questions selected in advance from the public. Candidate responses will be subject to time limits enforced by the moderator, which I really hate doing, by the way, but you know, it's part of my job. So each table will have two minutes to respond to a direct question with a one-minute rebuttal from the opposing table. We ask that each candidate give their name before answering so that it's clear to our listeners who is speaking. In the interest of getting to more questions, there will be no opening or closing statements. I am going to step out to introduce our 12 candidates here this evening so I can see more clearly. At the Republican table, our first two candidates are at large, Sean McDonald and Elaine Cariotti. From, and I know I'm in the way, so I'll move over here, from City Council Area Four, Michael Carabetta. From City Council Area Three, Michael Zachrasuski. From City Council Area Two, Daniel Zabrowski. And from City Council Area One, Isabel Rosa Kaiser. At our Democratic table, from City Council Area One, Sonya Jelks. City Council Area Two, Joe Scaramuzo. City Council Area Three, Crystal Blake. City Council Area Four, Kristen Misner. Misner, Miss Misner. Misner, steer after the beginning. Thank you. And from City Council at Large, Chad Cardillo. And from City Council at Large, Michael Rode. Those are our candidates. Our first question for Table One is on economic development from Tom, Tom Welsh of the Midstate Chamber.
Good evening, everyone. And our question relates with, is to what is your vision for downtown business development? As you know, many old downtown structures require investment to allow potential tenants to operate a business. While the city's committed funding and incentive programs for downtown as part of a citywide program, the blighted vacant spaces downtown remain. Do you support continued or increased funding specifically for downtown?
I'd like to introduce myself. I am a lifelong resident, a mother of two, and a small business owner. I do not believe that right at this point, we should invest any more downtown, Meriden. We've spent a ton of money. What I do think is we should start on the outside of Meriden, and we should bring in companies that are looking for help as far as if they want rent, we can give them an abatement on their rent for three years so that they can become, grow within our community and sustain here. Also, I would like to see tax abatement for companies that are looking to come, and we can give them tax abatement over a five-year period so that it gives them time to get on the ground and get themselves established. And also, if we have a company that would like to come into the town and they would like to bring residents, employ residents up to 60%, and if they could apply for abatement. Thank you.
Very well. Can we move to the Democratic table for a vote?
Thank you. I'm very disappointed to hear Republicans giving up on our downtown. Cities throughout the state of Connecticut are unknown by their downtowns. And if you have downtown that's with a bad image and is not performing, it's going to affect the entire downtown. Sonya, for one, will not give up in a downtown. I think we have tremendous opportunity now with the $6.5 million of funding going toward economic development. Virtually every building downtown has a developer now that owns it, wants to do something with it. That's the first in all the years I've been in office. We get people in there who just might have been turned that properties over and not developed them. We also have $6.5 million of investment going into the 5324 Colony Street and a number of the businesses there. So in the next two to four years, with the investment we've made and the focus we've made on bringing our downtown back, we are going to bring that back, and it's going to be a shining star for the rest of the state. Thank you.
Next question from Christian Escher comes for the Democratic table.
Yes. Do you support the Cook Avenue location for the new senior center over the Westfield Road? And is the project worthy of investment overall?
Hi, my name is Kirsten Meidner. And yes, we absolutely do support the new senior center and moving it to the Cook Avenue location. There'll be a lot more room in the location, more parking spots, and the ability to have a bigger facility with more activities for our seniors, even including pickleball, which I think is something all seniors can agree on. We all love that. They could even get their flu shots there. It's going to be sort of an all-encompassing, one-stop shop for our seniors, and they deserve to have a beautiful facility to stay active and be healthy.
Thank you. Next question from the Democratic table.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Rosa Kaiser, and I sat on that board for the senior center committee, and I 100% voted for the location to be at Cook Avenue. I feel that the city owns that property, so it's only fitting for it to be in the downtown area for the people that live in that area that can easily walk there and continue to enjoy the festivities in the new senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question comes from Mary Ellen Godin for the Republican table.
Yes. In that vein, what should happen to the current senior center building once the new center's built?
Okay. Michael Carabetta. I think the new, or the old senior center building should be, is, I'd like to get a business in there and get it on the tax rolls, but for right now, moving it over to the Board of Ed makes sense as far as using the space that we're about to put a boiler in that I really don't see a need for $300,000 boiler when we're going to vacate the property.
Thank you. Rebuttal from the Democratic table.
Joe Scaramuzo. I think this was discussed earlier in the mayoral debate, but exactly like, we would love to see a tax-contributing entity in that facility, but also, right, there was discussion around other, you know, the Board of Ed being interested in things like that. So long as it's a productive asset in the center of town, I think, you know, we can all agree on that.
Thank you. Next question from Tom Welsh for the Democratic table.
Yes, as you've heard in the mayoral portion, I asked a question that I'd like to hear the council's response to, and that is, there's a proposal to suspend housing development, all housing development in Meriden due to the Board of Education comments on the impacts of the school system, which was not supported by their, the way that I read it anyway, their September 19th enrollment projection report. Would you support a moratorium or restriction on all housing development in Meriden and so forth?
Yes. Yes.
As many of you already probably know, I was vehemently opposed to the moratorium, partly because I think there's a misunderstanding that this housing moratorium just doesn't impact housing in Meriden. It also potentially can impact economic development because most of our economic development projects sometimes include housing, commercial, mixed buildings. So, one, I think that it was not necessarily a thought-out plan to put a moratorium in place without having the data. If data shows that there's an opportunity for us to maybe look at how we, you know, plan for housing, then we certainly, you know, should follow that data. But why would we support a moratorium without data? And as most of you are aware at this time, that data came back from the Board of Ed, was not initiated by the city, came back from the Board of Ed, not showing any impact to the school districts. As a matter of fact, if you know anything about state of Connecticut, most of our school systems are declining in student population. So the, I was concerned about if that was truly about school populations or if that was a concern about just limiting certain types of housing. We should never go to a time where we're limiting housing and picking and choosing which families are welcome in our community. We've done that in the past against African-American people with redlining districts. I think we should be very careful when we do these types of things without data because you can't... because you can disproportionately affect populations of people who do want coming to Meriden and helping us make Meriden a wonderful community for all of us.
Sean McDonald, a resident for Meriden for the past 21 years, father of three, and a son that goes to Millie High School, sophomore, who I'm extremely proud of. Study's over. It's a moot point.
What he means by that is it was only supposed to last the length of the study. That was the resolution. So it's a moot point in that sense. But I did support the resolution because the Board of Ed made a detailed request as they were looking through their 10-year projections. And the point of getting, why would we make a decision without getting data? We were getting the data. We didn't want to add any more, any more data than what we already had in place so we could make an informed decision. That's why we did it.
Thank you. Next question. The next question is from Christian Metzger for the Republican table.
Yes. What do you feel are the factors contributing to the rise in auto crimes and other criminal activity involving juveniles? And what can the city council do about it?
My name's Mike Zakrzuski, and I'm a lifelong resident of Meriden. Recently, I worked for the city as a police officer. I retired after 13 years as a captain. So juvenile crimes have been on the rise for years all over. I clearly remember when the head of the juvenile division came in to start doing training in the police department. He was the one said straight out, this changing the age, changing the crimes, it's not going to work. Okay, you're going to see an increase in, like he had a crystal ball. So, Meriden Police does a great job for what they can, okay? But part of this has to come from the community, okay? We need community engagement to work with the police department. I was the commander, the neighborhood initiative unit. That was one of our main goals, to get the community involved, to let us know who's going out there. And we have to hold some parents accountable when a 12-year-old's out stealing a car at 3:00 in the morning.
So, I completely agree that publicity is a collaboration between law enforcement and the community. You're going to hear, I know, everybody, talking to a lot of police officers over the last few weeks, and also hear reviews about our current chief and the leadership and the culture he's creating. I believe we have a subject matter expert in that position that we all trust. So let's give him the tools and the resources he needs to address the problem. There's also a state component where we have to push our state delegation to do something about it. But I am open, and I know we keep discussing it, but we have experts. We have law enforcement officials that have techniques, they have resource, connections. There's a regional task force that's been developed with, with communities to the south of us. And I think we just need to create an environment where we trust our, our experts and we give them the resources they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is from Mary Ellen Godin for the Democrat table.
Do you support this downtown of police and their needs? Do you support policies aimed at calling police more accountable through measures statewide such as an independent review of death enforcement incidents? Or locally, such as the creation of a civilian board to review?
Thank you, Mary Ellen. My name's Chad Cardillo. I know that I speak for myself and for all the Democrats at this table that we support the incredibly hard work that the Meriden Police Department does every day. We've seen over the past couple of weeks that there have been a lot of challenging issues going on in this city. And the safety of our neighbors is the most important thing that we can make sure is being done with the police department. The purpose of the civilian review board that exists, I think, has been taken out of context a little bit. There are very limited things that the civilian review board can do. They look at already completed internal investigations that the Internal Affairs Bureau has done for thoroughness, completeness, accuracy, and objectivity. That is what is in the ordinance that was written. The CRB can actually support officers as well, making sure that internal investigations are fair and impartial, ensuring all the officers are treated equally. We can also make sure, you know, that, again, this is, this is being served well for the police officers. When we look at body worn cameras, which was brought up in the mayoral debate earlier, there was initially skepticism for that, but we've seen that it has actually helped support police officers fight off, you know, undue and erroneous investigations, you know, for things that they might have done before. The police department right now under Chief Rizzato is doing a fantastic job. Public relations, making sure that the community can help feel trustworthy of what's going on. We want to make sure that the community is able to trust the police department throughout the future, past Chief Rizzato, past whoever comes after him as well. And that's the purpose, I think, of, of really what was going on with this civilian review board in Meriden.
Thank you. A rebuttal from the Republican table.
Okay, coming back to the Meriden Police Department. Again, this is one of the best officers or chief of police in years since Chief Bishinsky was in office. You've heard the horror stories when he had two other chiefs down the floor. There was no real togetherness as there is with the chief right now. And the civilian review board, and I glad you brought that up. That is one of the most asinine things that has ever hit the police department in Meriden, only due to the fact that this board, when they met, I go to a lot of the meetings. I went one meeting, and they were talking about, you know, parking tickets and things that had nothing to do with really civilians. I mean, and Seth.
Okay, and I can speak directly, being a former police officer and actually a commander, was involved in a lot of disciplinary actions. They do a great job investigating. Everything is transparent. It's open to the public to see. I believe that should be sufficient for the residents.
Thank you. I'd like to encourage candidates to say your names so everyone will be clear who they're hearing. Thank you. The next question is from Christian Metzger for the Republican table.
Yes. What is your view of the city's investments in transit-oriented development?
I think we've been working on the TOD for a long time in Meriden. We've invested a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of resources. It's just not netting us what we set out to do. I believe that it's a great idea. I don't think that it's working. So I think we need to take our resources and invest them on the outsides of downtown and the TOD. Just like you're seeing with manufacturers going into Murdoch Gap. We have property in the city of Meriden that could be better served as manufacturing, warehousing, things like that, that create jobs, create tax dollars for the tax rolls that aren't coming out of the taxpayers' pockets.
And, just, just... Okay, just to follow up. We're downtown? Just to follow, downtown, I understand we did put a lot of money into that, and we haven't seen the benefit that we hope to. Looking around my area, Area Three, basically the east side, you know, every day you drive by buildings like Case Pharmacy, that's been sitting there with the roof burned off for, I don't know how long now. I mean, I don't know what the road problem or anything in there. You know, one of my patrol areas years ago with Research Parkway, that was going to be our next big thing. Drive down Research, you see all these buildings that are vacant. I know the mayor stated that we're, we're getting there, but we're not there, and we haven't done enough in the last four years. So that's why I'm hoping that we can get some new blood in here and we can turn some things around. We have a great location. You know, they say the real estate location, location. Meriden's in the center of the state. We have highways surrounding us. We should be thriving at this point. Thank you.
I agree with the last comment that was just made, that we are in the center of the state and that there are tremendous opportunities that are here in Meriden. And those of us that moved here, moved here because we saw the potential in this, in this city that we live in. We would be remiss if we didn't plan for the future, though. And we know that Meriden, just like any other community, has been through a lot of different changes, whether that be the climate changes or there are issues regarding economic changes. We have to make sure that we're prepared for the future. I think to say that we don't continue to invest in the downtown when we know that most cities, most towns thrive when they're downtown and are thriving, I think is short-sighted. The 20 years that we've put into putting flood control work in place so that we can make our downtown more attractive to businesses, I think is working. And we're finally getting to a stage where we're now seeing that the flood control is not, that flooding downtown is not a mission for businesses. We will see the businesses come back. We just have to keep working and not give up on our downtown.
Thank you. Mary Ellen Godin has a question for the Democrat table.
Yeah, this question also relates to Meriden's image. Does Meriden get a bad rap in comparison to the rest of the state? To what degree are the city's challenges a matter of perception? And what, if anything, should city government do about it?
Crystal Blake. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? Am I correct? We were kind of mistaken. I want to be trying to...
Yeah, does Meriden get a bad rap in comparison to the rest of the state? To what degree are the city's challenges a matter of perception? And what, if anything, should city government do about it?
Okay. So personally, I'm a mom, born and raised here in Meriden. I'm a product of Meriden Public Schools, as is my daughter. To me, Meriden is home. I think Meriden has come a long way. From when I grew up here, I'm also in Area Three, so we have a beautiful east side with a lot of growth opportunity. Would I love to see more downtown? Absolutely. We have beautiful parks in our city that are comparable. Would I love to see our downtown, like other downtowns in neighboring? Absolutely. But I think in time, we can get there. I also think, you know, our high school's state champs, so a lot of surrounding towns can't say that, our football team. And our sports at many of our different high schools and our middle schools are very enticing. I think our activities that we have in the community for our youth, youth programming, even at the middle school level, extracurricular activities are thriving. So I think comparable to other towns, Meriden is doing just great, but there's always room for growth.
Can we finish that?
You certainly can. My apologies.
I keep forgetting to introduce myself. Sonya Jelks, everyone. I also just want to add that the perception that Meriden is not a great community because of, you know, whatever reasons those might be, it lies in how we speak about our city, how we see our city. And if we're not being positive, you know, the negative comments on social media, the negative comments that people make in the press, there's no community that you're going to find that everybody's happy with everything that happens there. But we have to love, love this community. We have to speak heavily about how much we love it, why we are all still here, and why we think it can be great. If we're not doing that, then we're not doing our part. Why are we, why are you, that negative person, living in this community?
A rebuttal from the Republican table.
Sean McDonald. My family came from Ireland to this country in late 50s, and we lived over on Wall Street. And that's how far my ties go back to this lovely town that we live in. I'm very proud to be a Meriden resident. The thing that upsets me the most is that I hear people call Meriden the dirty den. And some people are proud of that. Well, I'm not proud of that. Our city is dirty. It's blight-infested, excuse me. Residents need to start taking responsibility for their lawns, their properties. The city needs to start holding landlords accountable for their actions. We have to start enforcing blight laws. Blight laws were made to be enforced. So if the city doesn't clean up, clean up itself, how are we going to lure businesses in here? Yes, Miss Jelks, you are correct. We have to be pride, take pride in our city, but it starts with accountability.
Christian Metzger has the next question for the Republican table.
Yes. Much has been made about the investment in flood control, through the Green and other efforts. Would you continue to support the city's long-term investments in these flood control initiatives?
Sorry. Dan Zabrowski. I've been here well over 70 years. For those years, I served in service. I attend a lot of meetings and everything. But here's a PEP that is down on Pratt Street. It's still flooding. What was the answer? I got this from our Public Works Director. He told me, we've got antiquated pipes down there. They didn't think about this when they built this green. They forgot, one of the most important things. Businesses over there are flooded. Fire department coming up into the fire department. And now we want to put the communications down in that, in that building where we have a problem there. But one of the biggest things that bothers me the most is that whole Green itself. When Carabetta wanted to buy this property, that could have been on the tax rolls. But no, it's under Meriden Housing Authority tax rate. And one of the things that I stress, what are you going to do when you take down Cedar Park? These kids have no place to play. And that's another problem. On Britannia Street, they cut out, cut out the parks over there. We had a park on Gillum on Cook Avenue, and it worked, worked to the benefit. But putting something down there for the kids to play, we saw two basketball courts down there. Something took them away from the kids. You know, what are we doing to promote kids? And what are we doing actually to put, you know, things in perspective?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I'm Mike Zakrzuski. And I have seen the flooding down there. I remember standing back at a police station watching a rowboat go by at one point years ago. Flooding is necessary. But the simple fact is, we have a lot of things that we need to do in this city. The recent thing that came up that Meriden Green was building a restroom and a storage building. You can just go back and look and see what the price of that is, and you can understand how we get upset when some of the spending being done.
Thank you. A rebuttal from the Democrat table.
Back in the early 90s, I read an article in the Record Review. They used to have stories about what happened 10 years ago, 50 years ago, 100 years ago. There was a quote in there from a councilman of 1890 in Meriden who said, quote, "Meriden has a huge downtown flooding problem. They should do something about it, but they probably never will." Fast forward 100 years, seven major disastrous floods that caused billions of dollars of damage, drove businesses out of town, flooded houses. It's been a disaster. So I said, you know, if we don't fix flooding, we're always going to be a second-tier city. Because what we had downtown, 14 acres of broken concrete and hazardous material. Flooding, flood control is, is one of the most important things we've ever done. It's brought new housing downtown. It's brought the train station downtown. When I talked to Governor Malloy about what we needed, he said, "I'm with you. Flooding is a major issue that you need to deal with in this community. You're never going to go anywhere." As far as, it also has been a bipartisan issue for years, except for just recently when our Republicans voted against part of the flood control project downtown.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This next question is for the Democrat table for Mary Ellen Godin.
Do you agree with plans to construct permanent bathrooms and maintenance facility on the Meriden Green? Also, there was a proposal about another apartment building behind the amphitheater. Do you support additional development on the Green?
The Green has won 11 awards already from all different kinds of organizations. We're on the map for one of the finest downtown greens in the state of Connecticut, plus the amphitheater. If you haven't been down there yet, you really need to go and see what we've done. As far as the, the facility that's been proposed by the flood control project, it's for a permanent bathroom for everyone, for all the concerts and major events that we... Storage for the farmer's market and the summer concert series, we have a lot of supplies that go in there. This is an integral part of the Green. The new portion that's being established, mechanicals and electric, that has to be put in this building as well. It's also, funding funds have been left over. Not one, not one cent of taxpayer's money. Funding money has already been acquired and will pay for the whole thing. Thank you.
A question for the Republican table.
Mike Zakrzuski. I agree that we do need bathrooms down at the Green, but when I went to the council meeting and I sat there and they approved another $700,000, just under $1.5 million for a bathroom and storage building, it just sounded like it was an incredible price tag. One of the counselors mentioned that we had put in for a grant for $700,000. Well, I will tell you, I did a lot of grants for the police department. And I do know one thing, if you appropriate the money in advance, you'll never get the grant. That's just the way it is. The state will look at it, and I believe the mayor even said this at the meeting, he was talking about it, the state will look at it and say, "Well, they don't really need the money. They've already approved it." So a motion to table it was put out there, which was voted down. The simple fact is, we could have waited until November to get an answer. This was July, and I drove past the Green on my way here, and I don't see one stick in the ground marking out why we had to do this so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question comes from Tom Welsh for the Republican table.
As noted in the Merrill discussion, one of the major issues that we hear about is with middle and upper-income families and economic, coming into Maryland, economic development is the perception that our school system is inadequate. And after years of flat funding and a $1 million increase last year, but not the $2.3 that the Board of Education needed, and a slight decrease, a couple hundred thousand expected to decrease from the state in the next fiscal year, do you support increasing local spending on education?
Mike Carebetta. Right now, you have to understand, when we sit down and do the budget, there's a million moving parts to it, okay? The Board of Education takes basically half of the budget from us. Not takes it from us, but that's their money to use. So then when we go down and we look at things like roads that need to be done, buildings that need to be fixed that Maryland owns, there's not much money left over to give them more money, you see? So it's hard for me to say I would adjust their budget upwards right now without seeing what the city needs to do for the city side. And then also make an important decision on how much funding we're going to fund them for the future, because as said before, you cannot take the funding back. You have to always fund them at that level. So it's a very tough thing to answer right now, but I don't think, at this point, I would be willing to increase their budgets for those reasons. I think sometimes during these budget discussions, the majority side feels we'll just raise taxes. And I don't think that's the right way to look at these things. I think we have a budget from the year prior. Our goal is to get as many things in there for that amount of money, not raise taxes.
A question from the Democrat table.
Chad Cardillo again. I am a Maloney High School teacher, and I see every day, you know, what we are doing in the schools with the funding that we get. But I've also seen in my tenure there that it is becoming much more difficult to do the things that we need to do for our students. Students that have IEPs and special ed needs, illegal students that are coming into the district, students that, you know, as they progress through schooling, we realize that there are more intensive interventions that are needed for the students. I think that right now, the district is doing everything it can, the Board of Ed is doing everything it can with the funding that it has. I agree with Mr. Carebetta that the answer can't just be to say that people are going to pay more taxes to pay for this, but we do have to look at making sure that the funding is adequate to even bridge us if you have fiscal year '25, when we're going to see more ESAR funding coming in. I understand we can't move backward, but we have to be providing what we need to.
Thank you. The next question comes from a reader, and it goes to the Democrat table. On our food desert, what can be done for those inner-city people who lack transportation to stores that offer healthier food options?
Sonya Jolts, Area One, Downtown District. Housing and having opportunities to get access to resources is probably one of the biggest challenges that most families will have. And unfortunately, we had the unfortunate instance of having one of our stopping, our grocery stores to stop business on the west side. And so it has been a concern of how we make sure that there's adequate transportation, but also opportunities for families. We do have resources, though. We have, you know, small mom-and-pop businesses and deliveries that exist in our downtown district. We have Seaton in our downtown district. So just because there's not a major market does not necessarily mean that in this community that we don't have resources. Now, I do have a concern for seniors who may struggle to get to grocery and locations due to driving and transportation issues. And I think we do need to work more closely with state and local officials to make sure that our transportation system is more robust in Maryland. I think it's not just a problem for Maryland. Unfortunately, this is a problem that needs to be worked on across the whole state. I do think that there are surrounding cities that are willing to partner with us to increase our bus system so that our transportation system is more available to more residents. But I do believe that if there are opportunities for us to continue to grow in Maryland, I think one of the pluses that we've had is that there are a lot of small business owners that have made their home in Maryland and that choose to do business with our local Maryland residents. And I appreciate that we do have, particularly in our downtown district, access to some groceries and local marts. We could do better. And I think that if there's an opportunity for us to offer an opportunity to, residents should do that.
Thank you. A question from the Republican table.
I agree. Mike Zakrzuski for Area Three. I agree, we need to up our transportation throughout the city, and that starts with actually studying the problem to see where the need is. It's just like on the police force, when we run into a problem, we study it, we look at it, we come up with a solution. This could mean if there's seniors increasing the number of senior buses, the number of senior bus routes, okay? Public transportation, we look and see where people are using it the most, we come up with a plan to adjust the routes, the times, whatever it might be, and we go in and we talk with the seniors, we talk with the residents, and we find out what their needs are. We can't do this in a vacuum, so we really need to look at the problem and then come up with some type of changes to the bus routes that will help everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question from Christian Metzger goes to the Republican table.
What's your view on the current relationship between City Hall and the Board of Education? It was mentioned before that there's restrictions to how much can be given to the BOE regarding budgeting and how everything fits together. But when the city council cuts the BOE's budget request by more than $1 million, what message do you think that might communicate to parents and other stakeholders in the city?
I currently work at Edison Middle School. I'm a climate specialist at Edison Middle School. I see the effects on a daily basis of budget cutting from education on a daily basis. We have an influx of students right now who have a lot more needs than what we can offer. And we have staff shortages. And for budgetary reasons, we have to meet people's, our students' IEPs or their plans that are set forth by the state, or by the parents and the state, to make sure that all children are entitled to their education, whether they're disabled or not. They are being cut, and we have to be able to provide the services, and not being able to provide the services for them is a character of injustice for the families and for the children. We have, again, we're short-staffed, we work hard, I work hard, and basically to cut spending from education is ridiculous. We're doing a disservice to the people of Maryland and for SIS.
A question from the Democrat table.
I finish up. Mike Zakrzuski. You know, and we agree, you know, students should be put first, but you got to remember, we're at a time, we have only so much money to go around. And the simple fact is, we're always asking different department heads, you have to do more with less. And we know the Board of Education is doing what they can, but there's always that little bit you can do to try to just increase your savings just a little bit, a couple percent, 1% when you have a large budget is a lot of money.
Thank you. A rebuttal now from the Democrat table.
Joe Scaramuza. So the question was the relationship, right, between the council and the Board of Ed. And I think we've already talked earlier today about, at the end of the day, the Maryland, the local funding, I want to make sure people understand when we're talking about that statistic about being the second worst in the state from a funding. It's, the Board of Ed is getting their funds elsewhere, not from the city council, right? Not from the city. They're getting their funds from state grants, they talk about private foundations, like the Galloway Foundation, things like that. So I think we need to strengthen that relationship and support. And you keep, you know, and the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed is a Republican-run Board of Ed, like, they're the majority. And we need to just continue to support giving them the resources they need. Because, I mean, frankly, and it's scary, because you see how much of your tax bill goes to funding the Board of Ed, but at the end of the day, we're really not doing our part as a local municipality. How do you do that?
We have supported them as a Democratic ticket because we don't.
I'm sorry, I can't allow an extra minute to the law, just to be fair to everyone here. Okay? The next question will be from Mary Ellen for the Democratic table. Democrat table.
The city's last revaluation resulted in a high number of tax appeals. What's your view on the city's most recent valuation? Do you agree with the city's handling of discipline regarding the recently terminated tax assessor?
So Democrat table.
Sonya Jolts, Area One. Those are personnel matters, so I won't discuss as a current city councilor, city councillor. We are not to discuss personnel matters. Our job is to be protective of the citizens, so we won't address any issues regarding personnel matters.
Anyone else from the Democrat table? Okay. A rebuttal from Republicans.
Elaine Curriati. It's unfortunate that we were left with COVID assessment as well as an assessor who took advantage of us. I really feel what the council should have done, since everybody was having a hard time making ends meet as it was already, they could have put in a phase in evaluation, reevaluation, which is actually when you take a percentage of what you were evaluated at, and you take four years to increase a person's tax, which means they would go a percentage each year until the next reevaluation. Not only should we have done that, but people are able to, January 1st this year, I encourage everybody to do an appeal and get an appraisal on your house if you feel that you've been wrongfully assessed. Once you get that appraisal, the assessment appeal board has to adhere to that appraisal. So I encourage people to do that. Thank you.
The next question comes from Christian Metzger for the Republican table.
Yes, in recent years, you know, there's been a heightened awareness in regards to matters of social justice. And so this goes to the issue of a statue honoring Christopher Columbus. Should it remain outside of City Hall, or if it should be removed and put elsewhere to a location like Columbus Park?
What I'll say to this, and that statue was given to the city of Maryland by the Unison Club back when Columbus Day was celebrated. So it's not a dig on somebody else, it's actually quite an honor to have it still standing there, because it does represent something to some of the citizens of the people. It's not meant to disparage anybody or anything, and I don't think we should be moving statues and things that directly reflect the history of our country and our city, because it's, they weren't put there to do anything other than celebrate something that they were proud of at that time. Yes, years have gone on, people feel differently about those things, but we also, you can't learn anything if you're not looking at your past. You can't correct mistakes made in the past if you're not looking at it and learning about it. So I am not for moving the statue to Columbus Park or anywhere else, or renaming Columbus Park. It's just something that I think was given to the city by a club. They were very proud of it, and I think it should stay where it stands. Thank you.
A question from the Democrats.
Joe Scaramuza. So my parents are Italian immigrants, my father's here tonight. I have no issue, that statue does not represent my heritage or the pride in my heritage, right? So there are plenty of Italians that we could celebrate, that honor my heritage, my parents' heritage. I have, if, and this is the thing, like, I think when we talk about diversity and equity and inclusion, we like to manufacture outrage around, you know, oh, this is offensive to me. Like, and how can, we basically tell people they can't, how they can or cannot feel, and how they can and cannot be offended by something. And I think we need to, as empathetic as we could be, we can't walk in their shoes. So if there's a real contingent of citizens that have an issue with that statue on that property, I, as an Italian-American, have no issue moving it offensively.
The next question for Mary Ellen Godin goes to the Democrats.
Yes. Should the city council conduct a more comprehensive review on the current status and efficacy of many boards and commissions such as the Neighborhood Rehabilitation Advisory Board created to perform various roles in city government?
Chad Cardillo. I think that if there can be public input on the things that the city does, the more public input, the better. I mean, we're all up here running for transparency, we're all up here, you know, making sure that the public knows what's going on and has a say in what's going on in the city. And I think that if there's any sort of study that's done on these boards and commissions, it's to make sure that they're doing the thing that they're tasked with. I also think it's important that it is well explained to people when they want to be on a border commission, what exactly is going to be in the purview of that border commission. You know, we talk about the fact that it may be difficult to get volunteers and things like that. I know that even just going on the city website and like looking at what the boards and commissions are, and there's a list of, you know, the names of the people that are on it, but there really isn't a great explanation of what, you know, each individual border commission is supposed to do. So I think being able to educate the public in what the purpose of these things, these boards and commissions is, making sure that people that, you know, we have over 60,000 people in the city, are just about there. We have people that can fit into these niches and have expertise in these different areas. We need to make sure that the people who have the expertise in these areas are also the people that are able to be on these boards, be on these commissions, and help the council, help the staff in the city do their jobs properly. I don't think we have too many of them. I think realistically, we are, you know, we are doing. are, you know, we are doing good things in the city right now, but we want to make sure that as many people as possible are having a say in what we're doing. And it just helps to make more understanding of how the government works as well for people, which is never a bad thing.
Thank you. The rebuttal from the Republican table.
Deanne Zavera Skwenske. I've sat on many boards. One of the ones that was really bothering me the most was the aging board. After our attorney left, it went to fume. And the bottom line is, I went on the cemetery commission. That went to fume. It's kind of sad. You sit here, and you say to yourself, why is this happening in the city of Meriden? Why are we not getting people to come forward and put things in perspective? The parking and transit, I was on that for a short while, but I saw something that I really wanted to be on, and that's the zoning board of appeals, one of my favorite boards, because, again, what are we doing with all the light areas in the city of Meriden? South, as I mentioned, repeatedly said this, but one of the biggest things is, there was only but one commission that came forward, and it was the Neighborhood Rehabilitation, only due to the fact they have nobody sitting on their board.
Thank you. Next question from Christian Mesker goes to the Republican table.
Yes. Is the local government doing enough to promote access and services for residents who primarily speak Spanish?
It's about Rosa Kaiser, Area 1. I don't feel that they're doing enough for the Spanish community. I just feel there should be more resources for the bilingual community and speaking with people here, as I've been canvassing. I just think changes need to be made, and more resources need to be in place for them, so it only helps them understand what's going on as well. Thank you.
The rebuttal from the Democrat table.
Joe Scaramuza again. English was my second language, right? So I grew up in, on the Louis Ave, Linsley Ave area. Commerce was conducted back then in Italian, and, you know, on the street. And we need to do more, right? And Meriden has always been a community of immigrants that come in, and we give them the opportunity to integrate, assimilate, and move on and better themselves. And we need to continue to provide those resources. We need to do more to include our Latino community in our programming, in our government, and leadership. And I just, that's what Meriden is, and always has been. So I absolutely am all for doing more and offering more services for bilingual support, top to bottom, in our, in our community. Thank you.
Final question of the night comes from Tom Welsh, and it's for the Democrat table.
To mix things up a little bit, I hear complaints that our taxes are too high. Yet looking at the, I see that Meriden's at 32.99 mils plus 35 downtown, but Middletown's at 35.7 plus an increment. Cheshire is at 34.32 above us. Berlin is at 34.31 against us. What is your opinion on the level of taxation in Meriden at this point?
With the last, my quote here, with the last revale, we were able to drop our mill rate about 10 points. And we are, in the mix of cities like ours, that have the same demographics and so forth, we're pretty much in the middle of what taxation is. The places in the wealthier towns are lower taxed because they have more money to spend, the Fairfield County and so forth. But I think we've done a pretty good, yeah, we used to be worse off than we are relative to other communities, but I think we gradually, over time, evened that out. And I think if you look at all the cities in our demographic, we're pretty competitive with all of them for taxes.
If I could just, just very quickly, Chad Cardillo, I think it's important also to look at the total tax burden that's going on, on a homeowner or a renter, because you talk about mill rate, well, mill rate's only part of it, right? It's the total amount that the house is valued at. Well, when you look at Cheshire, right, and you say that their mill rate is higher than us, but the average home in Cheshire is also valued much higher than Meriden. So the total tax burden for somebody in Cheshire would be higher than Meriden. So if we look at the total tax burden, and it's, you know, it gets in the weeds, but it's important because that's what's coming out of somebody's pocket, we have to look at the fact that Meriden really does, if you look at our surrounding towns, sits really lower than, or right in the middle of, most of the towns around us on total tax burden.
Just want to point out that earlier tonight, I believe, there was a comment made about Democrats, you know, just raising taxes and not caring about taxes. We went three years prior to COVID, not raising taxes, because we understood the burden that was placed by the citizens in Meriden. And we just recently, I think, after the revale, assessed where we should be at that point. We are all people very interested in being able to afford to be here, and we constantly look at that. If it wasn't for Democrats, keeping an eye on projects like this, I think you would have higher taxes.
Thank you.
Mike Carabatta. Looking at the town examples you gave, you, that's comparing apples to oranges a bit. It's just the sheer population size. You take, we'll go with Cheshire, their mill rate may be higher, but as stated, their housing costs are more, so they're bringing more money, but they're also better with their money, because they can be, because they don't have all of the people that we have. You know, they have a completely 100% volunteer fire department. We can't do that. We have too many people for that to be a question for us. So we have to put more out, more money out in public services than most of those towns, the police, your fire, ambulance, Board of Ed, because there's more students. So I think we, you really got to take a look, if you're trying to compare, and see that, you know, year over year over year, how much are we paying in taxes, and when does it stop? Is there a top line where we can just stop raising the taxes?
Very well. That's the end of the group. Our panel's forum tonight. I think we can, we're all leaving a more knowledgeable group, learn more about our candidates. It's a good time to give a round of applause to all of us. We'd like to be here. And a reminder, next Thursday, we're having a panel's forum, same time, 6 o'clock, for the Board of Education, City Park. Thank you so much for coming.